I'd like to show that all council members are in attendance. Melissa Head via telephone, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Tonight, we have five public hearings. If you'd like to address the council in regards to any of these, please step forward to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You will be allowed a maximum of 10 minutes on public hearings. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 17-175, which was continued from August 14, 2017. This resolution authorizes the vacation of that part of the 11th Avenue right-of-way, abutting properties legally described as Lot 6, Block 11, Riddle subdivision, and the east one-half with a vacated alley adjacent, along with Lot 1, Block 14, Riddle subdivision, and to vacate that part of the 11th Avenue right-of-way extending from the east right-of-way line of South Sixth Street to the west right-of-way line of South Main Street, and to vacate the west north slash south alley in Block 15, Riddle subdivision. Is proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 17-183, a resolution approving the authorization for right-of-way in connection with the West Broadway Reconstruction, Segment II, Project, #PublicWorks 18-20. Is proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Sir?
Jack Powers, All-Star Tire, 32nd Broadway. My actual address is 823 Valley Drive, Crescent, Iowa. I am the business owner at that location. I need to know what kind of right-of-way you guys are going to try to take.
Jack, I believe it would be just enough to do the sidewalks on the corner.
Well, I have had two meetings with the engineering firm and the city representatives, and they want to come 25-foot back into my parking lot to put the monument signs, the streetlights. They're going to take like 25-foot from the curb back into my parking lot. I cannot afford to lose that kind of parking.
Yeah, that...
So, my proposal is, I don't want the monument signs on my corner. And I realize that's part of your master plan, but I cannot afford to lose that much parking in my parking lot. As of right now, I know that Mr. Sandow is the only one that's ever been in my business or at my parking lot. I do a lot of commercial business, trucks, trailers. I cannot afford to lose any more parking.
I...and I'm perfectly willing to acknowledge that I would stand corrected. I don't believe we're talking about 25-feet into your parking lot, but...
Not 25-feet to the parking lot. 25-feet from the curb into my parking lot.
That's why I said into your parking lot.
Right. I cannot afford, and plus, you're going to put a fence up...
You don't have much more parking lot than that.
I...I'm going to lose about another 10-foot of parking from that corner, and then they're going to put a fence up from across the sidewalk area. Another question I have, who's responsible for the maintenance on that fence and this monument sign that's going to be put up? Because we're not open 24-hours a day, and there's other people that park there that could have damage to this aesthetics that you guys are going to put in there.
So, I'd assume the...and again, I'm making assumptions because I haven't talked to you and haven't been involved in the conversations with you. I assume the monument sign you're talking about would be a monument sign for your business.
No, no, no. This is the signs on the four corners that earmarks 32nd and Broadway, that you're going to do on 35th Street. That's going to come up into my parking lot, and I don't have room to lose any more parking. Now, I don't own the property. I lease the property. I've been down there 36-years doing business down there. Part of my lease breaker is if I lose parking, I can walk away from my lease. My landlords are here tonight. They don't want that to happen.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I don't need that monument sign, that pillar that you guys are going to put in there. Plus, you're going to move the streetlights back into the parking lot, and I'm going to lose some parking area. Plus, you're going to redo the wheelchair ramps, which is going to come back into my parking lot, and you're going to redo the driveways, which is going to come back into my parking lot.
Jack, that's my business card. If you'd give me a call, I'll try and have an answer for you tomorrow. The Public Works people are at a convention. I think they come back on Thursday. I'll try and get a hold of it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I've talked to Mr. Cox, and I've talked to another gentleman today. I've got his card at the store. But I just cannot afford to lose any more parking.
I perfectly understand.
But...
When you said monument sign, that's a...
Well, these are the four-corner signs that you guys are going to put on the major intersections.
Yeah, yeah.
I cannot afford to have that in my parking lot, because I don't have enough room the way it is.
Right.
Whether we can get away without putting those in there, and I know that's part of your master design...
It is.
And I...I mean, I'm not trying to be a bad guy about this, but I can't afford to lose any more parking. I do too much commercial business with trucks and trailers. I cannot afford to lose...it's going to be bad enough when I only have one entrance when the project's going on, let alone have this stuff sitting on the corner. So, I would actually...right now, I'm with this...we're not going to give up any property, as guess is what I'm telling you.
Well, and because I can't answer you with any specificity tonight, let me check it, and...
I appreciate that.
I can get your phone number out of the phone book, but you got mine if...
I do. I will give you a call.
All right.
City clerk has my phone number.
Okay.
If you wanted to get with her, but I cannot afford to lose any more parking.
All right. Let me see what I can find out.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else wishing to address the council in regards to this?
My name is Terri Ann Love, and I am here from Springfield, Missouri. We are representing the ownership of the property at 3150 West Broadway. Our interest and the interest of All-Star Tires are intricately linked. I am in agreement. There is no property, no parking lot to be lost there. Things that are decorative features of your proposal appear to be very intrusive to the operation of All-Star Tires and to our business, and I would echo what has been said. We simply do not have the parking lot space to lose to continue the operation of a long-term business here in Council Love's.
Thank you.
We thank you for your attention.
Thanks. Anybody else? Anyone from...do we have a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I think there are a lot of concerns. There are a lot of competing interests, though I'd remind all of us that any further alterations to the master plan may test the patience of the funder of such improvements. And I certainly can never be accused of blindly going along with the wishes of a funder, far from it. But in this case, I agree that that area of our community, the west end, has been neglected for many decades, and I don't want to...again, I don't want to see us jeopardize that area getting its fair share of improvements so that not just other parts of town get it. I would think that...I would agree and appreciate that the mayor's going to look into this particular case, but as I read this particular resolution before us tonight, it's primarily geared, if not exclusively, to making sure there's enough space on the corners so that we can meet the Modern Americans with Disability Act requirements, which are federal requirements that even if they weren't a good idea, which I happen to think they are, that I think people who have trouble walking should have every right to go places the rest of us do. We don't really have a choice in the matter. The federal government imposes those standards on us if we want a penny of federal money back for our roads.
Jack, you only get one. I'll be in touch with you.
So, I think tonight, we're primarily talking about the corners and meeting a federal requirement so that disabled people can get where able-bodied folks can get. And I don't really want to relitigate the master plan again. I think every time we do that, we put in jeopardy the funding, and I hate to see the west end get shorted.
This project is very important, and when we were talking about protecting businesses before, the importance of this project was emphasized again and again. And at least two occasions during study sessions, I asked the representative from Public Works to explain how he understood these right-of-way requests to be framed and how many properties would be impacted. And the understanding that he gave us at that point was much the same as what Mr. Watson was saying, that it was just designed to help enhance those sidewalks beyond what was already there. But the information presented here tonight cast some question, because now if we have right-of-way being taken, if this encompasses other things than just that de minimis sidewalk access, then perhaps we need to take a closer look at this and find out what other right-of-way requests there are that may be detrimental to existing businesses. So, you bring us a bit of information that we did not previously have, and I thank you for that, and it merits several questions and further inquiry.
I tend to agree with Al on...from what I understood from Matt Cox was this was just kind of the right-of-way, almost a corner like this.
Yeah, that's my understanding, too.
Understanding, too.
So, I would make a motion to postpone this, because we do have to come onto the property right-of-way to enhance that sidewalk and the corner as what I understood it was. I know Matt and Greg aren't here to understand if it...how much that affects it if we postpone it for two weeks.
We have to deal with the motion on the table at this point, I think.
And what I would say is that what we're doing is we're authorizing them to begin those negotiations for a right-of-way. So, it doesn't take any right-of-way. All we're doing is saying that, you know, we're giving them the ability to go out and do that. So, it's postponing it, I don't think is necessary. I think that that's exactly what they're doing, is they're going to be out there doing the negotiations, unless I didn't read the resolution correctly. That's what I understand.
Can you confirm that this just gives them permission to talk with Mr. Powers or other business owners?
I'll have to go back to the document. I was looking at the property site. I'm sorry.
The other thing, I'd like to see the letter, and I don't doubt the gentleman's veracity. I wonder, however, if it's a letter related to...there's so many facets to the project...
Oh, tons, yeah.
...that it could, in all fairness to him, and again, I don't doubt the truthfulness of what he's saying. I wonder, though, what the letter says, because I don't think with the greatest respect, that's what tonight's vote is.
And I...you're probably right, Nate, but I want to make sure before we...
Yeah, I can read the...
But I wonder if the gentleman brought the letter, because at this moment, I don't have...
I think it was just a verbal discussion, and Jack, I'll get you an answer on...
Okay.
And I want to see that.
I'm talking about the sidewalk, and I'm talking about the wheelchair ramps. I'm talking about the monument that's going to be put on that corner.
Sure.
What's the stoplight that's going to be there? I don't...I'm not talking about the accessibility.
Yeah.
That's not what I...
In order for us to do the ADA ramps, and this came up in Phase 1, that the way that the corners are and that the properties are, is that we need it a little at the corners, and that's what was explained.
I'm not talking about...I'm talking about the monument that's going to be put on each corner, and moving the stoplights on to the...
In all I'm saying, sir, with the greatest respect, is from what has been presented to me, that's not what tonight's vote is about. I think, again, there are many, and I'm not saying you're lying, far from it. I think you might be talking about a different part of the project that's not tonight's vote, and if you had something I could look at to change my mind, I'm more than happy...
I've been at AGM two different times, and that's the project money. That's the project that we've gotten. We had a meeting this afternoon, and that's the project scenario that they give us.
So, what we're doing right now is the Segment II project, where this is the...what this is, the way it reads is the city wishes to make improvements in that Segment II. Right-of-way acquisition is required for the construction and maintenance of those improvements, so that's why you're coming in.
I know. I'm not putting about the property. I'm not supporting the project.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, then, the city will negotiate with property owners in accordance with the state and federal regulations in order to secure the necessary right-of-ways and the improvements for the property. And so, what we're authorizing is the authorization for the right-of-way process is approved for the West Broadway Reconstruction segment. So, we're approving the process of going out and negotiating those right-of-ways, so...
That's why I just...I want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought that's what the vote was, but I want to make sure, clarify with Dick before I...because it...
So, it's not authorizing them to take your property. It's authorizing them to negotiate with property owners.
I want to make sure, as a city council, you knew that me as a business owner, these people as a property owner are against giving up any property, because I have everything I have.
And I appreciate where you're coming from, and that's...
I'm not.
Yeah.
That makes...when we get to that, that makes it a tough choice, because as a city, we have a lot of things to weigh, and that certainly, your opinion matters a great deal, but it's not the only one. And so...
And I will be down there to talk to you so that I better understand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Yeah, I just...I want to clarify the vote, because I want to give the city engineers the right to go talk to business owners and negotiate that, so...
Absolutely.
That's what they need to do, so...
Understanding that the ability to negotiate with a government entity is sometimes a little lopsided, but we'll see how the process goes.
Any other poignant thoughts? All right. We have a motion on the table to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 17-184, a resolution authorizing the disposal of city property legally described as Lot 8 and the west 5-feet of the north 40-feet of Lot 9, Block 25, Mullen subdivision. Is proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Move the resolution pursuant to staff recommendation.
Second.
Is there additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 17-185, a resolution to continue the public hearing on the disposal of property legally described as Lot 1 Franklin Heights subdivision to Michael Wrench DDS PLLC until September 11, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Is proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve the continuance of the public hearing until September 11.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. This time and place for public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 17-196, a resolution approving the parking facility plans per lease purchase agreement for the Rivers Edge parking facility. Is proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jay Noddle with Noddle Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Omaha. As you all know, we have all collectively been working on the Rivers Edge project for quite some time now, and we are at the point where we are going through a procedural matter with respect to the lease purchase agreement between the parking garage entity, the city, and the Iowa West Foundation, whereby the previously approved lease purchase agreement required that the city approve the plans for the garage so that we can then submit plans for review for a building permit. So, that is why we're here tonight. We are...I'm happy to say, we are ready to go. The other thing that's happening is we are putting a final purchase price into the agreement. You may recall that the agreement as approved anticipated a cost for the garage of approximately $11,900,000, but provided that the cost could be as great as $17 million. I'm pleased to report that the cost, as of today, is $14,002,000, and that will become a final cost, should you determine to approve the plans as presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Noddle? Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the council? Anyone from...oh, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
The requirements that were set out within the lease agreement originally set out five points that needed to be met with these plans, and the city's reviewed them, city department heads have reviewed them, and it meets all those requirements, so therefore, I'm in favor of going ahead and approving those.
I think it's, again, a fantastic project, another west-end improvement that I think is long overdue, and lots of people want. I think ultimately, for people who may not understand all the technical jargon that sometimes gets used, this is with regard to the parking garage, the parking facility down near Tom Hanifin Rivers Edge Park for all of that new development, to bring more businesses and more places for people to live in our community, increasing that tax base to try to make it even less likely that we would have to raise taxes to continue to fund city services that everybody relies on. It's a good project. We've...I think the majority of the council got it right when we approved this project to begin with tonight. As I read it, it's a formality. They're at the point where they have their final plans as to where, you know, how the fire system suppression system works and all those kinds of things. It's ready to go. It's been reviewed by the developer. It's been reviewed by the city. It's been reviewed by the proposed contractor, Keywit, who is a good builder in the metro area and provides a lot of jobs to people in our community as well. I think it's a win-win local solution, and so I hope we approve this formality tonight and continue to move forward. I think we're getting this right, and we need to stay the course.
I would respectfully disagree with the thought that this is...this vote is a formality or that the resolution is a formality. What the resolution says in part is pursuant to notice published as required by law, this council has held public hearing upon proposal to approve the final plans for Rivers Edge Park parking garage, and has considered the extent of the objections received from residents or property owners on the proposal. Accordingly, the following action is now considered to be in the best interests of the city and the residents thereof. We received the plans that you see here today at the study session. They were not provided to the public, and we were told, well, that's because the city's not constructing the garage, which is a true statement. If we were that vote, that project would have to be approved by referendum of voters. That's not being done in this case. Where I question whether or not this is in the best interests of the city at this time, not long ago, we were provided documents by the Finance Department relating to bonding actions, taking out this year's allocation of bond debt to fund various projects. And included in that is $2 million for parking ramp lease purchase down payment. So, we are borrowing money to pay for that down payment. Now, the fact that it's coming out of general obligation bonds is important, because also approved earlier this year was a revised capital improvement plan. And the capital improvement plan, as many of you will recognize, lays out how we go about funding all the various projects that we undertake. The program was...or the proposed program was revised based upon a decreased level of bonding authority. In other words, we have maxed out our ability to bond for certain types of debt. And so, a number of Public Works projects to include street and sewer improvements were removed from this year's portion of the CIP, and were effectively delayed indefinitely. So, what I have a problem with in this proposal is that we are using general obligation bonding funds that should be used to repair crumbling streets and sewers, and instead, we are using it for this particular project that has already, with this vote, will assess a total of about $24 million in total public funding to support this project. And as much as the project looks very nice, appealing, and has great promise, we have to prioritize, and I think this is the wrong time to be...
So, this is an ongoing diatribe of false statements that really has reached back over the last four years.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
First of all, it's my turn to talk, Mr...
Point of order.
Ringenberg, it's my turn to talk.
I...
First of all, the $2 million was not bonded for, so it's not general obligation money. Second of all, we are the second-lowest city in the state of Iowa with debt, so we didn't decide that we reach maximum amounts and we can no longer bond. We have plenty of bonding authority. And what we did decide is that we don't want to take on a lot of debt. We've strategically kept our bonding low. The only city in the state of Iowa with a lower amount of bonding of their bonding authority is Iowa City, and the reason they're lower is they're a regents community, and so they get state dollars that contributes about $3 million a year to their fire department and $3 million a year to their police department. So, they don't need to do the bonding. They get additional revenues. It may have been on the old CIP, but if you remember, it was...the CIP was reworked, and it was taken off of general obligation bonding.
Sure. It's right here, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know what the date of that is, but I can tell you for a fact, it's not being paid for with debt.
So, when we approved that bond, the resolution approving that bond for that $2 million was incorrect?
You did not approve a bond for $2 million for the parking garage. I can tell you that for a fact.
So, what were we spending the $2 million for with respect to Rivers Edge Park?
What we have...you were correct in that we have spent a substantial amount of money in Rivers Edge Park, for streets, for sewers, money that is now being recaptured as we sell land that will help pay back some of that debt. This is what people commonly call a TIF project, which means that all the new debt that's created, including this parking garage, will be paid for 100% by the project itself. itself. If nothing was ever built there, it produced, it was a park, it produced no tax revenue. The new tax revenue that's produced by all the new development that's there goes into paying for the parking garage. If that tax revenue is not sufficient enough to pay for the parking garage, the backup for the citizens of Council Plus is that the Iowa West Foundation will pay for any shortfall. So there isn't no city taxpayer dollars going into it, there is into the parking garage. There is no risk to the taxpayers whatsoever. There won't one penny come from the taxpayers of Council Plus unless they are part of that new development.
So what's that two million dollar upfront payment that we're making?
We're making a two million dollar upfront payment, but we're not making it from bonding. You said we bonded two million dollars for that.
Well, then it's a great coincidence that the two million dollars is reflected on both documents.
Well, what I would also like to say is that we have a, we have a signed lease in place that had these agreements in it, and to suggest now to not go ahead with the lease agreement, I have to wonder what that would cost the city in legal costs to break a lease that we have an agreement that all the terms have been met. So when we're looking out for the best interests of the taxpayers, to choose now to not go ahead with a signed lease is, first of all, not very honorable on our part, but second of all, would cost us money for legal defense. So I don't think that that's probably the best direction to go. And again, I think that this council is a council of their word. We agreed to this lease, and they've met the requirements of this lease, so to not go ahead with it, I think, would be not in the best interest of the taxpayers in the first place, but it would certainly put us in a perilous position and a legal position at that.
No, sorry, Jay, you don't. You only get one shot. Jack, you only got one shot. You only get one shot.
I would tell you that back in July--
It's ten, if you want.
In July of sixteen, I voted no on the parking garage and for the simple fact that at the end of the twenty years, the fourteen million dollar parking garage the city of Council Plus will own, will have to maintain, and I'm just not in favor of that, and I will, I will continue to not be in favor of the parking garage. I do want Rivers Edge to succeed. I think it's a good project. Clearly, I want every development in Council Plus to succeed. However, the city owning a fourteen million dollar parking garage at the end of twenty years just doesn't seem right to me, so I will, I will vote no tonight on this resolution.
Do we have Melissa?
Melissa, are you there?
I am, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Could we do a roll call, just because on the phone it's hard to hear? And it seems like this vote will be close, so I want it to be very clear.
I think it's a good idea.
All right, we've had a request for a roll call vote. The motion is to approve.
Nate Watson?
Aye.
Sharon White?
Aye.
Melissa Head?
Aye.
Al Ringenberg?
Nay.
Roger Sandow?
Nay.
All right, those are the public hearings. Madam Clerk, ordinances?
Ordinance six-three-zero-two, to amend the zoning map by reference in section fifteen point zero-two point zero-seven-zero by rezoning the south one hundred and forty-five feet of the east six hundred eighty-two point fifteen feet of the southwest quarter, southwest quarter of section ten seventy-four forty-four from A two Parks Estates Agricultural District to R three Low Density Multi Family Residential District as defined in chapter fifteen point one zero.
I will be abstaining on this.
Is there, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Or, I'm sorry, we have a roll call vote. Sorry, Melissa, we need a roll call.
Nate Watson?
Aye.
Sharon White?
Abstain.
Melissa Head?
Aye.
Al Ringenberg?
Aye.
Roger Sandow?
Aye.
Ordinance is on third consideration. Ordinance six-three-zero-one, to amend the zoning map as adopted by reference in section fifteen point zero-two point zero-seven-zero by rezoning lots two fifty-nine and two sixty, Belmont Edition, and the north half of the vacated alley from R one Single Family Residential District to C two Commercial District as defined in chapter fifteen point one five.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor of the denial signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I believe we have three nays.
Motion to approve, ordinance sixty-three-zero-one.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
Resolution seventeen dash one eighty-six, authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Potawatomi County regarding the Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program Award.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one eighty-seven, resolution approving the street finance report ending June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one eight-eight, resolution abolishing one sludge applicator, nurse truck operator position, abolishing one plant utility worker position, and adding one plant operator position.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I think it's just important for the record, I think Councilmember White had a good question this afternoon's session about the recommendation comes from, it doesn't note it in the packet, but it comes not just from human resources, but it comes from the head of Public Works. And I think it's, I think that was a very good question you had about--
My follow-up, just for everyone's general knowledge, is that since we have a H.R. professional, I've been told that all those job elimination recommendations have come through H.R. Now, I can't verify that, but that's what I was told. They've done them all since he's been here, so, anyway, they eliminate jobs.
I would just like to add that the two positions that we are abolishing are currently, there's nobody in those two positions, so we're not letting anybody go at this current time.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one eight-nine, authorizing changes to the positions assigned to the legal department.
Motion to approve with the following amendment. Looking on page one forty-seven of the packet at this resolution one-seven dash one-eight-nine, under the third unnumbered paragraph under background discussion, I would like to amend as follows. After two positions titled paralegal, add the following between commas, "who shall serve as the principal secretary slash principal assistant to the city attorney."
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one-nine-zero, accepting the bid of RPL Utility LLC in the amount of seven hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents for the twenty-eighth Street Storm Sewer Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one ninety-one, authorizing the mayor to accept the bid and enter into a cooperative agreement with Mid-America Golf and Landscape, Inc. for the F Y eighteen dash twelve Phase One realignment of the Dodge Riverside Golf Club.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one ninety-two, accepting the completion of the Southwest Iowa Law Enforcement Roof Replacement Project as complete and authorizing the finance director to release the final payment of seven thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety cents in thirty days.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one-nine-three, certifying the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen water sewer and refuse collection lien schedule for non-payment to the county treasurer to be assessed against the owner's properties.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one ninety-four, authorizing the elimination of one captain's position and the creation of one engineer's position with the Council Plus Fire Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Just that on this particular one--
I was gonna say, I just proved myself wrong, I think, so--
And that was the reason for my question at study session, because Chief James is the one that brought this resolution forward--
Yep.
Whereas it was H.R. that brought the other one, and that led to my confusion.
And to be very clear, I have no problem whatsoever with human resources being involved. I think it's highly appropriate. They should be. I'd just like to hear what the department head may think, too.
Yeah, I get you, and I was gonna--
Yeah, I, no quibble with--
Obviously made a mistake, so--
Okay, that was where my confusion came in, too.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Resolution seventeen dash one-nine-five, to abolish the, to establish a commemorative renaming policy relating to the street signs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there discussion?
I remember a couple of years ago, the mom of a fallen Marine who I knew not very well, he was a few years younger than me at St. Albert, looking to rename the street on which St. Albert sits. And there was discussion at the time about how do we balance honoring people who deserve, including that young man who died for us in Iraq in the beginning of oh-five, January of oh-five? How do we, how do we honor people such as him that are due great honor? And at the same time, how do we balance the, the streets that already exist? And it may sound like a small matter, but if you live on a street or you have a business on a street and the formal name of the street changes, that impacts significantly on having to change several things, and particularly for a business can get quite expensive, and it can get confusing. So we were trying to think away over the last couple of years of how to, how to balance honoring people on existing streets, not talking about new streets here, but existing streets that have had names, many of them for a hundred, hundred-and-fifty years, as a matter of fact, with, with honoring people. And a lot of cities do commemorative signs where there's the formal name of the street, which would remain, and then there'd be an honor name, usually in a different color. A lot of cities in the metro area use brown for that sign, usually a little smaller and usually underneath the main sign, but it varies a little bit. And we didn't have a process in place as to how, to be fair to everybody who came up with the proposal for one of these commemorative names, so not changing the formal name, but an additional commemorative name to honor somebody, how do we, how do we deal with these requests fairly so that every request comes in gets equal consideration? You know, what would the standards be? It shouldn't just be whether I like the name or whether one of my colleagues likes the names. How do we come up with a fair process? And I think this policy that's been put forward by the administration is a good compromise. It lists out certain factors about, you know, somebody's connection to the community, what they may have done to warrant such an honor. It's just some factors to take into account, when, when a name would be an appropriate name and when it wouldn't be. And it gives a fair process in place for a review by city staff, and then a review by the mayor, and then a review by the council. So you get the professional staff weighing in, you get the mayor whom you elect weighing in, you get the council whom you elect weighing in. It just seemed like a fair process in place, and it reminds me very much of that proposal a couple of years ago about a formal name change. That's, that's really all we had at the time. And now, I think, as we move forward in the future, ideas like that for commemorative signs are, I look forward, and I encourage you to tell people for names that you think might be worthy of being remembered by a commemorative sign by fellow residents of Council Plus.
I just want to, you know, just say that I am too, and very much in favor of it, and I really appreciate the mayor and staff bringing forward the policy. It's something we've been questioned about for several years, and I really appreciate seeing this come forward and getting this done, but thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Applications for permits and cancellations, seven, eight A liquor licenses, one through eight.
Motion to approve, eight A, one through eight.
Second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Any citizens' requests to be heard?
None received.
Anyone like to address the council? Anyone from the council?
I do want to acknowledge there are a good number of young men today for their communications merit badge and encourage them to continue to be involved because that's what makes our country great, so stay involved.
And on that note, we all received an invitation to attend a ceremony for Takota Leroy Crowell. He is receiving his Eagle Scout badge, so I just want to take a chance to mention that tonight, how proud we are as a community to have so many of our young girls and boys involved in their community and especially with the Scouts. And earning that Eagle Scout is a huge step in a young man's life, and it took a lot of work to get there, so I want to take a chance to mention his name tonight.
All right, thank you very much for attending. It's a great crowd, and have a great rest of the week.